Okay, good evening, everybody. I apologize for leaving you out in the hallway. I promise you we're doing serious business in here, so it's worth the time. I'm sorry about that. We got started a little bit late. To get started, I think we distributed the minutes for the August meeting. Did anybody have any corrections on that? If not, those will be approved by unanimous consent. And we'll move to support group updates. And is Jamila doing the PTO? Jamila, you want to get us started?
Sure. Good evening. I'll be quick. Just wanted to let you guys know that we have had a successful start to the school year. Each individual campus has already had meetings with their respective teams and everyone is off and running. We plan to continue some new initiatives that we started last year, like snack carts for the middle school. That's called First Friday Favorites. So we'll start that this Friday at the middle school. Other campuses will have a monthly snack cart similar to that. Our hospitality teams are planning the first staff luncheon, which will happen September 27th. So everyone is getting excited about the planning for that. And then the same night, we'll all be participating in the community family tailgate. So hope to see you all there. And that is all that I have.
Great. Thank you.
Jala. You're welcome.
Mr. Schlegel, I just want you to know I'm keeping tabs on Tanyu softball and the rec league in Lake Norman for you, coaching a team this year. So I'll do some scouting. When we get up there, we'll talk. I got a picture for you. I got a picture in two years.
Good evening. I hope everyone's doing well. I actually don't have much either. We are in full swing. All of our sports are beginning their seasons or a couple of games in. Everything's going great. Unfortunately, we hit some thunder and lightning on Friday night, as you all know. So we had to unfortunately cancel Friday night's football game. We will not be rescheduling that just due to the fact that football is once a week. It's hard to to make up football games unlike other sports. So our next home game will be September 23rd, I believe. That will be our next game. We're away this week, away next week, and then a bye week. A lot of great things happening around campus. We have our early bird special for the boosters. That goes to September 30th. I recommend anyone, anyone at all that goes to sporting events, especially as a family or a high school student, buy that booster pass. We have it marked at such a level that you'll get your money back immediately, just about immediately if you come to games, especially our high school students. The amount of games that we have on campus, you know, they go to a handful of games. It's already going to pay for that pass. Plus, it makes it easier for them to get in. As a reminder, we are cashless now at our admissions for all of our event, or all of our events. And then our golf tournament, I know I've talked about it in the past, but that is October 21st at Skybrook. We're starting to fill up. I'm starting to get a lot of emails. I think we're over the halfway point with our registrations. And usually by now, things really pick up. We'll start and next thing you know, we're going to be sold out, starting a waiting list. So I recommend if you're thinking about going and you haven't registered, you do so now. Other than that, we're looking forward to finishing the the season pretty strong.
Thank you, sir. Very efficient briefings.
Feedback. Okay. Yeah, I wish I was as efficient. I'm not going to be as efficient. Unfortunately, actually fortunately, September is always a big, big happenings. Time for school and state reports and and this one is like that. So but let's start with great news. Today, the State Board of Education received the data on performance from our spring EOGs and EOCs. We actually knew the information, but it's embargoed and we can't share it until the State Board gets the presentation. And I am happy to share that LNC received a grade A again, as well as exceeded growth expectations. And that was something that we were very excited about. As you know, growth really speaks to each and every student making substantial growth beyond what is expected of them. Which means our teachers and our students are working very, very hard at the, at their work and supporting our students. And quite honestly, just for comparison, many of our contemporary schools that we often compare ourselves up to, there's only one other school that had an A and exceeded growth. Several of them had Bs and and most of them did not meet growth. So excited to to be a part of that of that club and congratulations to our staff and students. I did want to share, so as a school, we identify a school level teacher of the year each year. And at the end of last year, at the high school, it was Angela Massengale. Here it was Laura Cook and at the elementary, it was Demi Kasepis. And even though we have three amazing educators, only one of them can be moved forward to the state level. So they go through a committee here where past teachers of the year evaluate their portfolio that they put together. And I'm happy to share that Ms. Tem- Demi Kasepis from our kindergarten team will be representing us at the state level. So we're excited and wish her the best of luck. Now for not great fun stuff. The Title IX, if you guys have not heard, the Department of Education just released new Title IX guidance. We knew this was coming for almost a year. And so some of the things that were in that Title IX change, the biggest change was around the protection for gender identity. Before you could only claim sexual harassment in your birth gender, now that Title IX would allow for sexual harassment for identified gender. There is another, there's two other issues that are are pretty difficult for schools. The first is in order for it to be considered harassment, it had to be severe. Hang on, I gotta get my notes back so I get this right. Severe, offensive, and pervasive. It had to be all three of those criteria. Now, the new ruling says it has to be severe or offensive or pervasive. Well, in a world where people get offended quite easily, that makes Title IX a really sticky wicket. Because what I may think is offensive and what you may think of offensive is not, it could, the bar could be widely different. And so that's, that's one thing. And then the last thing that could be very difficult for schools to comply with is it compels schools to offer protection for harassment that is happening off campus. In other words, social media. It, that could take days, months. It's very, very difficult. You can ask any of the principals that work on this. The stuff that happens in social media happens fast. It's sometimes out of context. So I think the intent of the new Title IX regulations is very good. They're trying to be as inclusive and as supportive as possible. So let me say that again. I think that the intent is wonderful. I think the execution is going to be very, very difficult. What is really interesting for Lake Norman Charter is this. We have been named in a lawsuit. And that lawsuit is not against Lake Norman Charter. That is, we were named as a part of a lawsuit that stemmed in Kansas, went all the way through the federal court in Kansas. And what has happened is parents were able to sign up if they just, there was a lawsuit and you could sign your individual student up. And then you told what school your child went to. So a parent, and I have no idea who the parent is or who the child is, they're not required to say that. But I do know that we were named as a school of a participating child. That child received an enjoinment from participating in the new regulations, which means Lake Norman Charter is enjoined from doing any of these new regulations. And so what that means for us is the previous Title IX is what will continue to guide this school. And that will stay that way until that Kansas lawsuit, I'm sure is challenged up in further courts. So currently, we are under a, we are under a a judgment that we need to follow. So for us, I needed you to know what, what type, yeah, it's very confusing. And it was very confusing to know, well, wait a second, can somebody kind of include you in something? What if you as a board wanted to take on the new stuff? And all the research we've done and talked to at least a couple of different attorneys says that these, the recommendation at this point and the safest route is because we are enjoined by the Kansas decision. The Department of Education cannot say that we are not complying with Title IX because of the legal judgment. If we go outside of that, we would be going against a legal judgment that we're included in. So I'm happy to answer any questions. I wish that was the end of my report. It is not. I promise it gets better. But basically, we have a safe harbor clause and we need to continue to support and use Title IX the way that it has been. And in if we come out of that or that judgment changes, we will be coming back to you with new policy that includes this new guidance from the Department of Ed. But we're not there yet and there's no sense adopting a policy that we cannot follow because we have a legal judgment against us. Okay, questions? I bet.
Everybody turn your mic.
I bet.
So the Kansas is already decided?
Yes.
Is it being appealed or?
I, I believe, I don't know that there is an appeal yet. I fully expect the federal government will appeal. Because right now, it is a judge that has said they're blocking a federal agency from a decision. So I, I think it's very likely the Department of Justice will move forward that. Now, with that being said, guess what? There's an election coming up. So I, I would doubly guess that it may not be appealed until they wait to see how the election turns out. Because it, depending on that administration, that, you know, they could start the appeal. And then if a new administration comes in, they're going to withdraw that. So my guess is, at this point, that's my guess, nobody knows. But I believe it will be appealed if the administration stays the same. If it does not, then it will likely drop and we will go back to the old Title IX rules. Everybody will go back to the old Title IX rules, not just us.
So I guess, and and I'm trying to wrap this in my brain. So the Kansas opinion, so we were named as part of this because someone wanted less restrictions on?
Correct. Because these restrictions, in particular, I think there is, there are certain groups that take issue with the gender identity expansion. And so that is largely where I think people found challenge. I don't, I'd like to think that parents were like, oh, I bet you it'd be difficult for the school to prosecute social media behavior. But I'm guessing that's not really it. I think it's more on that. So.
So do we, so, so this student that was attached to it?
Yep.
It could potentially be, I guess, I guess it doesn't really matter. But I, but just so I understand, like it's, they, there was wind, the, the, a family could have gotten wind that this more, this law change was coming, not like it. And they could be a current family that decided to attach us to this lawsuit.
Correct.
Just so that we would not have to implement the new, okay.
Yep, all of those things. And and like I said, it doesn't, it does very clearly, and I have seen the lawsuit. I have a copy of the judgment and our, and our school is specifically named. Along with several schools in CMS and a couple of other charter schools throughout the state and some other larger districts.
There was no monetary type of, it just was an injunction to be, to not follow the new.
That's exactly right. It's just an injunction at this point. That was the decision of the judge and then it will stand that way until there is an appeal.
So if you don't know who the student is, do we know, how do we know that they're definitely a student?
We don't, but we're named in the lawsuit. And I don't know what verification. Where this gets really sticky, not for us. But actually, the judge came out and said additional parents can continue to sign on to this. And so that's a whole nother sticky wicket because they're not going to add that. They basically put this blanket saying that said you can do this. But we're specific, like again, if I, and I could be happy to share it, but we're literally named in in an addendum to this lawsuit. But where it got stickier, and I think schools that get named after the fact and aren't there, they're really in a gray area. Because they're not actually named in the decision, but the decision says that other schools can sign on in batches. So I actually feel a lot more for students. In a lot of ways, it's a little clearer for us than it was for other, other ones.
Shannon, legally, is there anything that we have to do? And do we have to get our legal representation, our counsel involved at all?
I've, Gil was one of the attorneys I spoke to. We went through the coalition for another one. And and here's the other thing. There, there is some varying opinion. So I think everybody believes that we're enjoined from, there's an injunction from us moving forward with this. But as an example, one of the attorneys said, well, you should move ahead with this policy. Well, then the problem is we have two policies in place. The other attorneys were like, no, don't do anything. You are, you're literally stuck right now. So it, you know, anybody will tell you law is decided by lawsuits, right? You know, like legislators do it and then people fight against that and do that. So that's kind of where we're, where we're at. So I don't think we need to involve them anymore. We're not, there, there, we're just kind of along for the ride. There's no, there's no threat to us. We have something that's an injunction against us. The only choice we would have is if we really felt strongly, we would have to, we could do a lawsuit. I would highly recommend against that. I think the federal government's going to take care of that and has the resources and the money to do so.
Yeah, my, my concern was that and, you know, were there legal costs we'd have to pay in order to get this resolved?
No, I think we're, again, we're just along for the ride. And it will, I think this will really flush itself out, probably post-election. Again, whether they do that or whether they come out and change the regulations in a way that makes more, I don't know what that'll look like, but that's really what's kind of the hold right now. So in a couple of months, I think we'll get a feeling for whether we're going to remain in this or if we feel like at some point it's moving forward. And I'll keep the board updated when we get, when we get more information on that. Okay, back to good stuff. So, so let me, let me tell you a couple of other good things. So as we've been talking with the board over the, in into last year and a little bit in governance tonight about how we have more neurodiverse students. And some of our students have, have some pretty significant needs. So some of the things that we're doing is trying to teach job and employment skills. And so here at the middle school, we had a basically coffee cart and snack cart that was, that kids learned about using money and how to interact. That has been now expanded to the high school and there's a new coffee machine that's doing that. So it's, it's been really exciting to see. Because we did not have students who had those needs until this year move up to the high school. So we're going to continue to see some of our programs adapt. And really proud of our teachers to look for job experiences. They also have taken our students to, and this started last year, to many outside agencies and places and job employment situations where they can see neurodiverse students, you know, once have graduated, what are available to them. And what opportunities for their, their skill development post-high school for them to learn a little bit about. So really want to commend our EC folks on that. I'm going to stop the share for just a second because I want to show the board a document and so we'll go there. Lake Norman Charter, after we got, during COVID, we had federal funds to, to have Dr. Danielle Graham, who worked with Novant Health be in-house. As those grant funds dissipated, we needed to look for other ways to best service our kids. Because as we know, and we're learning a lot more about this, a lot of, a lot of scientific studies around what it, not only COVID, but isolation, but also screen time and different things about anxiety that's being caused. And we've partnered with Atrium Health. They're going to be offering a virtual-based teletherapy here at each of our schools. And they were on campus for both of our back-to-school nights. So parents became aware, created these flyers for us. And really what's great about this, if anybody has ever sought out mental health treatment for adolescents, it's hard to find a qualified provider. Specifically, one that deals with adolescents. And what's great about Atrium Health is they will, they, they have created a whole department specifically to support adolescents. So middle school and high school. They also are keenly aware if people have language difficulties, if they prefer a provider of a specific background, if they need to have a male provider, a female provider. And what's great is it's done right here in school. So there's minimal school time down. And they have actually hired a specific provider that will be the, the provider, similar to Dr. Danielle, who can then track up with kids and be with us. But they'll just do it virtually. And so parents don't have to leave work. They can get this help really easily. And it's, it really, it's something that they've actually been doing with CMS and several other schools for years. And kudos to Jody McKay, who had a connection and brought this to us and said, oh, what a great timing as we were going to lose that support through Novant. So excited about that. And we already had one student start this program already this fall. So we're, we're very excited about that. And, and just appreciate that, that Novant sees the, the need for this. Okay, let's go back to a couple of different other shares. We put together, okay, there we go. We put together on our website, and I challenge you to go home and take a look at the old version because the new version that I'm showing you tonight hasn't launched. We have a running document on our website that lets people from the outside, whether it's college folks, recruiters, to prospective parents, to just people who are in our LNC community, learn about who we are and and some of the different things and our successes and background. And Ms. Marie Joseph has put this together. And what you can see is it talks about our school, our mission, our students, what our program is from leadership and action, some of the national recognition. Gives them an idea of the programs, when we brought on different schools, how they did an ACT. And so this is just a much more user-friendly, hey, look, it's all the board members. So that they can learn about our school in a one-stop shop. And it's really a neat thing. And this obviously you can tell took a good deal of time. So just want to say thank you to Marie Joseph for putting this together. I think we're just waiting on one last little bit of data. And then it's going to launch formally on the website. So if anybody sees Ms. Joseph, a, a big thank you to her for, for the efforts that she made over the summer putting this together. I also want to point out that there is a lot going on and hopefully you've seen these in your inboxes. We've been sending out, not me, Sarah and her team have been sending things out in regards to our students' health and well-being. And this, the first one that came out had a lot to do with physical safety, the things that Officer Benano has done. Tape, you know, back to the different safety meetings he did, all of the different safety strategies. And you can, you know, to the See Something, Say Something app where kids can report anonymously if they have concerns, what parents can do, and what our emergency procedures were. Another communication went out today that talked about people, you know, like if your child is sick, who do you contact? You know, if you're not feeling well, what we can offer in health rooms, you know, what we offer for other things from AEDs to other, other supports like EpiPens. So, and who they can, who they can reach out to. So there's a series of these different emails that are going out that hopefully will serve as a resource to our parents. And lots of information there. And again, kudos to the people who put this together and worked with our communication team to try to help our parents to understand because everybody has different needs. And they're, they're getting a lot of information as to how they can best support their, their student while they're here. Couple last things. One, we are excited. Lots is happening with our counseling department, specifically our high school counseling department. I'll come back at some point and give you a whole big thing. Probably we'll ask Mark and his counseling team, along with Mr. Funchess, to talk a little bit about that. But one really exciting thing is we have two college fairs. One is a charter-only one that, that is actually going, one of them's going on tonight, September 4th. And then we've been asked by the regional, out of UNCC to held its CACRO, which is the counseling regional organization. And we're hosting a, a college fair here on campus on October 15th. That's going to have over 80 schools in, in attendance. Which is great for our parents because, you know, everybody hears about sort of the same colleges, but there's so many great programs, scholarships, opportunities. And this is a great way for our families not to have to travel all over or to skinny down their list to where to travel to and learn more about that. Do want to echo that Jamila said there's a community tailgate on September 27th. That was extremely well attended. Last time we hosted it, want to invite the board members and any of our folks that are going to watch our board meeting online. It's going to be a great event and it goes really K through 12 that participates in that. And then kudos to, again, I guess I'm hitting Jody twice. They've started a new program at the elementary called Knights Navigators. So I love anything where there's cross, you know, campus support. And Knights Navigators is a group of seniors that are going over and working with, when they have club day at our elementary and helping out with other needs throughout the year. So they're getting their service hours while, you know, the big knights are mentoring the little knights. So that is really cool. And she's coordinating all of that. And then another collaboration that we talked about last year that I think I have, let's see if I have it. Our kindergarten and sixth grade is continuing to collaborate this year. And I wanted just, just to see this, this is how many times that they are doing activities. And every time you see a bolded one, they are getting, they're coming together. So they're either going to the elementary or coming to the middle school. And they're doing activities leading up to these in-person visits. So these kids are getting to know each other and really building a lot of, a lot of goodwill amongst them. And it's nice for our sixth graders, who a lot of times when you're sixth grade, you can't volunteer, you know, how do you volunteer and how do you have influence? And you should see how sweet they are with our kindergarten kiddos. And then they have a culminating trip to the zoo at the end of the year where they do stuff. And I think there's even a cut, like some of the sixth grade, that group from last year, that cohort is doing some things with seventh grade and first grade. Yeah. So it's something that started and that we're hoping to see continue to to move forward. And then my last thing, and I promise I will be done. We met, Scott and Matt and I met with Michael Jaycocks, who is the head of the Park and Rec Department here in Huntersville. As you know, with the new elementary school, we're going to be partnering on the gymnasium again. They gave a good deal of money to do that. It's been an extremely successful partnership. Matt does a great job of interacting with Park and Rec. And it's really a great use of public dollars, to be honest, because they, they, we use their fields, they use our gyms. We, we don't have to build duplication. It works really well. And one of the things we met about today is unfortunately, it looks like in the next couple of years, we're going to lose our tennis facility for our students, for our teams. And luckily, we're forward-thinking on the elementary campus. So we're going to clear out an area for that. And then hopefully, we'll look towards the future of like, can we get some grants from the USTA? Can we partner with Park and Rec? And when we met with Park and Rec, they were immediately, they said, we're in, we'll partner. And it looks like right next door, there's a fire station, they're building a park. And that park is going And that park is going to build, it, that park should open at the exact same time our elementary. So one, our elementary is going to have this beautiful park right next door with the facilities that are going to be there. And they're talking about, it could be pickleball courts, could be some other things. Um, we talked about doing a walking and nature path through both. Um, and there's going to be bathrooms right there. So if we do build our tennis courts, there will be external bathrooms right there for us to use. And if they build pickleball courts, then that's a win-win all the way around. The bathroom will be there, Park and Rec confirmed. Even if they don't build pickleball, they will put a bathroom that we will be able to use for our facility for whenever we have things. So it's just, and, and they basically said they will be in on a partnership with us. And that partnership, if, once if we can get it built, they will do all the maintenance on that, those courts. And if anybody knows anything about tennis courts, they are difficult and hard to maintain. But there's a lot, they have partnerships with USTA and some different things. So it's really nice to see as a community, us coming together to best use our resources. So when we know more about that park, I will let you know. So I am done.
Okay, in terms of the whole business, we'll have um, briefings from our chairs on the committees and we'll start with Thrive, Nicole.
Um, first up, uh, we have who is part of Thrive. We haven't actually met yet for this school year. Um, so we're working out in the next couple of uh, weeks, having that first meeting. Um, but our committee is made up of myself and Michael as chair. Um, wish he was here tonight, but um, and then from the high school, we've got Garrett, Norris, Nisha Macy and Evan. Um, our student, the student representative. And then at the elementary school, we've got Stephanie and Heather. The middle school, we've got Ms. Fish and um, Alicia O'Neil, Christopher Gilry. Uh, Ms. Fish was, I, I can't call her anything but Ms. Fish. She was my daughter's counselor. Um, so I know her by that. Um, and then from administrative um, perspective, we've got Marcus and sorry, Mr. Funchess and Mr. Colosseo. Um, our goals for this year are two-pronged. We have um, um, the student experience. We're looking at the night of distinction. Um, how do we promote that and it's, um, how do we assess the students' um, experience and presentation? Career exploration, of course, we're going to um, continue um, to do career um, speaker series, uh, which we'll talk about. That's one thing that we've already started working on, um, on the next slide. And then um, lastly, we'll talk about, or we'll work on the leadership and action. The big thing is how do we promote the why for students and teachers? But um, it, as, as we identify this as an area of focus, the school, um, I'm forgetting. Tiffany, I'm so sorry. Um, she's already done some great work um, with the high, um, the interim principal at the high school um, to change and kind of create um, something that seems really cool so far. Um, that will help to influence that why um, at the high school level. And so as I'm, as I alluded to, we've already started some work as, as it relates to the career speaker series. Um, at both the high school and the middle school, we were collecting parent interest and being career speakers. Um, the goal there is that every speaker or every parent that signs up won't necessarily um, be um, a speaker, but we will know who our parents are that have different skill sets. So as we um, uh, figure out what our students' interests are, we'll know who those parents are that we can leverage for those career speaker series. Um, but we are planning to meet in the next couple of weeks. We've got a interest form or a let's coordinate our schedules form out. Um, and um, we're looking forward to that first kickoff meeting. Any questions?
Thanks, Nicole. And from our newest board member and our newest committee, Future Ready.
Yes, a lot of new things going on here. So thanks, everybody. Um, my name is Derek Screen and we'll be talking about Future Ready. So this is a, a new committee here and we are, I'm really excited. Um, this being my, my first committee here and the kind of my first intro, learning and ramping up. So bear with me uh, as, as I get ramped up, but I'm very thankful to have the, the support of Dr. Graham. Uh, I don't think you could have had a better chair. And I recognize a lot of these names. We have not met yet, but uh, I can tell we have an all-star committee here. So I'm, I'm very excited for what, what outcomes will be produced with this program here. Um, so me and Dr. Graham were able to meet and have our, our first kind of brainstorm session around where we might go with our, our vision um, for this committee. We drafted or Dr. Graham drafted a admission statement. Um, where we want to kind of focus on keeping it flexible and open to uh, what the future technical careers uh, might be available for our students here. And so we're going to keep refining that as we discuss and meet and kind of add to that. Where we'll uh, have some opportunity for AI and, and those type of implementations here at the school. Um, so I think we've set that meeting for the 16th, so I'm, I'm excited for that to get together and uh, talk a little bit more about that. But I did want to kind of put up the first draft so you can just kind of take a look and read it for yourselves. Um, we added or Dr. Graham added to the end of this to kind of, you know, really keep it open for what we're trying to do with this college prep and future ready program. I think that last part, Dr. Graham, was it, we added right there. We had that last part there, through embedded opportunities and practices, they cultivate growth in areas of academics, extracurricular and durable skills to nurture a student's potential and prepare, prepare them for post-secondary success. Right? Because as these tech careers grow and we have different opportunities for our students, we want them to be uh, have an open uh, idea of what they can do with these skills in regards to AI and how you implement them, whether that might be. Um, you know, I know the Community College next door has a great Tesla uh, engineering program. So there's all types of opportunities that are becoming available. We want to make sure that we keep these doors open for our students. And that's kind of what we'll be focused on with this future-ready college prep program. So, any questions?
Yeah, and, and I think it's a, one of the things that I think um, we didn't go over goals and that's because Future Ready is a brand-new, just for those who might be watching that Future Ready is a brand-new, a brand-new group. So one of the things they'll be looking for, for their annual goals is, well, probably two things. One, what's our large objectives, right? So sort of that five-year goal objectives. And then what's the annual goals? And they've already started doing work on those. So probably in the next couple of months, I think it, it looks like we'll be able to bring those back to, to the group. Yeah, so I'll um, I'll hop in here. Um, so IDEA, I'm just going to leave the, the committee members up so folks can see that. And um, unfortunately, um, Ridgely is under the weather this evening. But the good news is there wasn't a lot to report. We do have a meeting coming up next week. So that, that group will be meeting and the, really the main focus of the group is going to be the transition. As um, we've announced before, the board had announced, this is going to become an operational committing starting January 1st. And so um, we're just wanting to make sure that the structure of the good work that has been done is set up for success moving forward. And um, you know, sometimes we, we see shifts. And um, when those shifts happen, as an example, we partnered a lot with the diversity club. Well, you know, sometimes clubs will wax and wane a little bit. Well, if they're not filling that role, there's other groups, like I think an interact club is starting. So we're going to be looking at how, how that transition can be made smoothly. So we don't lose any of the work that that group has done over many, many years here at Lake Norman Charter. So more to come on that. Meeting is next time and, and Ridgely will be ready to, to give some more detail when we get back on that transition.
All right, moving to new business, Jared Stein.
You want to go first, Jared, and then I'll?
Well, I, I'll just preface it, just say for the board, we will need to, to vote tonight on changes. An amended contract with Bobbit Construction, who's our design builder. Um, so um, I'll let Shannon kind of walk you through some of the details and then we'll, we'll do a vote.
So one of the things, just to give an overall um, view, and I, I did put some of this in the board notes, but for the public to, to know, we are, we are at almost like you can see the finish line. So um, tonight we will be asking to um, add an, an addendum to the, the contract. We already have in a contract with Bobbit. This is extending. The contract we had up until this point got us through set design. And um, and now that we are um, finishing the financing, which the timeline for that looks to be um, the third week in September. Um, the question you would probably ask is the one I did, hey, if we authorize this contract, what happens if by chance uh, that there would be anything with financing? And there's, there's language in here that we are only responsible for what we have spent or done up to this point, the work they've done up to this point. So um, although the financing is going to be done uh, the week of, I believe it's September 20th. Yet see Haley's double fingers crossed, we're almost there. Um, that we want to get this approved because once the financing is, then we can put shovels in the ground and, and have a a groundbreaking ceremony the first part of October. So some of the things that have been really good that has happened, um, we partnered and you guys had authorized us to work with a group called Choice Advisors. Um, and you also authorized us to work with an underwriter, which was PNC. The, they have really turned out to be an exceptionally good team for us to negotiate terms. And some of the things that we've been able to do have saved the school significant money over the long run. Um, some of that has to do with not having to purchase performance bonds. So you would not see that in this, in this contract, because any performance bonds would be solely on the person. You know, would be on us, it would be on the people building. Um, so that would be, that would be money, unfortunately, that would not be well-spent. Um, we were able to recalculate our debt service to put us in a better um, fiscal position. Um, we did not have to have the, our property reappraised. Um, and they're, they're in the process of looking, as you can see, rates are about to go down. And so um, we're looking to lock in the most favorable rate. So lots of good stuff. In regards to this contract, this contract has been reviewed by council. You'll see things that are blacklined. The one thing, so what, what we're asking for tonight is for you to authorize this contract to move forward. This is the construction side of this contract. But I do want to point out on page three, we're, we have asked for one amendment. They have agreed to it. And so um, pending that amendment, so authorize us to move forward with Appendix A, which is the construction contract, I'm saying this for Melissa's benefit, with the amendment that um, and Melissa, you don't have to get this, with the amendment around um, on page three, it talks about retainage. So if you just want to put amendment, a retainage amendment, Melissa, for the notes, it, we are going to ask that we continue to maintain, we get to keep retainage until the, till a hundred percent. So what it says on here is seventy-five percent, we've asked them to keep retainage for a hundred percent. And that's just in case, hey, there's some, you know, if any of you've ever built a house, there's always a punch list. If you have retainage, you have a little leverage to come back and be like, hey, we need you to fix these couple of things. And then we'll finish the final payment. And so that line in that, in, on page three, um, under number two will be changed to, we get to retain it uh, for a hundred, until a hundred percent that the work is done. So that's the only little amendment and happy to answer any questions.
My name is still on here, so.
They've changed it, yeah. And Greg got the docu-sign, so yeah, we had to do that. Yes, so yes.
I don't want to be on the hook for this.
Yes. It's so funny, Haley's, I tell Haley this all the time. Someday Shannon's going to be sitting at her retirement home at 85 and they're going to come repossess my wheelchair or something because I've signed many things, so you're off the hook on this one.
I'm teasing, I'm teasing, but we got to let Greg have his glory.
Yes, so he, he has, and he confirmed he does have the docu-sign, but I'll be letting him know to wait on that one. Well, and tomorrow they'll send this amendment that we're talking about.
Do you have a motion to authorize the contract is presented?
This is Amy. I'll go ahead and um, motion.
Second. This is Jared, all right. All in favor?
Aye, aye.
So, we're going to talk about, thank you, board. That's exciting. We're about to build a school. So hopefully with the financing, one more, one more. Um, so Cherie is going to help me to uh, talk just briefly. We have to, i- in your board notes, you're going to see there is a thing called Title II. So Cherie, I, I did put a little note in there, but for the betterment of the whole group, can you tell us what Title II is?
Yes, Haley, I tried and Haley said no. Um, but it's, it is a grant for us to be able to continue in, with professional development. So it's all surrounding professional development.
And um, that, that, the grant, Cherie and Haley have really taken on the leadership in that, but we've used our school leadership team to um, get feedback and it's going to allow us to provide, um, as we've talked about before, how do we provide training for our staff as the world changes, as our student body changes. And um, we're, we're really excited about some of the opportunities it's going to provide for our, our students. But we are required to present this to you. I don't believe it needs a vote of any kind, but just that it is in the board minutes that we have talked this over with you as a board. And again, happy to, to answer any questions about this. But it'll be a great opportunity and I believe it's about seventy-five thousand dollars that we're going to be able to put towards teacher enrichment.
How much flexibility is built within that? Is it pretty? Flexible?
Oh, she's saying yes now. Yeah.
So this is a federal grant. Um, Cherie and I had to come up with things we want to spend the money on, but the nice thing is you can go in and revise, you can edit. If there's something we stated we're going to do, but we're unable to execute that, you can reroute that money. And then because it's a federal grant, it's over a twenty-seven month period. So if we don't spend that whole seventy-five thousand this year, that will roll over. And this should be a reoccurring grant moving forward. So um, that's going to be the nice thing about this. This is something that we can hopefully continue as we move forward. Did that answer the question?
You did, yeah. So it sounds like it's flexible in the sense of you can modify that and.
Yeah, but it has to be used for professional development. So it's not like we can go grab it and I don't know, like have a school luncheon or something. It does have to be used for professional development, but we can change what that looks like as long as we stay in those parameters of the grant.
And that's it. That's all we needed.
Good. I'll have a motion for a term. If I can do it on my own, I guess I can.
This is Amy. I'll second that. Aye.
Being this joint.
Thanks, everybody.
Good job.